I know, because I said to turn it off.
Okay, so we are recording, so welcome everybody to our venues and communications committee meeting today, Wednesday the 8th of February. The agenda is 64822, declarations and indisculpable junior interests. Noted, thank you. 64922, apologies for absence, Karen.
Thank you for seeing from councillors Broughton, Rainn, Brothford, Hollis, Germaine and Parker.
Thank you. So welcome again to those who have attended to make us call it to allow the meeting to go ahead. So on 65022, the minutes of the meeting of held on the 11th of January, which were received by all councillors on 1st of January. Are those present happy for me to sign those as a true record? Great, thank you. So 65122, financial report and update, David.
Okay, so you had the financial report designated, but if there is no questions, I can just cover a few points.
Go just through it and then we'll have questions.
Okay, so income wise, which is the slide on the screen, shows that bar income is above forecast. Hiring income shows slightly below budget, but there's a good projected last two months, which should bring that in on forecast. The tea room has outperformed budget, it's showing a slight upturn in our most difficult period, which is the winter. So you'll see a slide in a second which shows it's starting to upturn again after the Christmas period. And our events income has done really quite well. Actually, that one's not been replaced by Alan, so that one shows 1,097, which was last year's, the end of last year, so it's now 9,091. So our Christmas party did boost that. So expenditure wise, yeah, expenditure wise, market fees are down and it's not likely that we'll get to forecast budget on that because again, this is the most difficult quarter, the winter period. We were hoping to pick up another couple of new traders, but they haven't materialised. But we have got people that are looking to come along on an ad hoc basis. We've got Menchins with us next Tuesday doing a MOT on bikes and things like that. So they'll come along on market day hopefully to get a bit more footfall down. So expenditure wise, the biggest area of concern is the repairs and maintenance, which is hugely over forecast budget. And as I've mentioned in previous meetings, that is pretty much down to a lot of statutory repair work that we've had to do over the course of this year. But hopefully it's not going to be something that's done annually. Most of them are done periodically over three, maybe even five year gaps. And it seems like, you know, we are venues, I understand that, but we're also our admin base, the town hall. But I think we're moving a lot of the repairs into this budget. So it wasn't originally forecast, but we're picking up those costs. So all that taken into consideration, even with the 12,000 over the forecast budget for repairs and maintenance, we are still looking, well, we are net at this moment in time of, that one's wrong as well. It's £43,723. So we have a January hire book of over £10,000. So I think by the end of the year, even though we've overspent on the repairs and maintenance, which was a necessity, I think we should bring home our forecast budget by the end of the year. So that's a real positive. So happy to take any questions.
No.
It's just something to clear my mind. Obviously finance deal with all the gas and electric.
Yeah.
But should venues understand what their costs are? Just say, for example, you've done a do in the Carnegie, well, say for that night, you've had to have the heat going on and the electrics and all that. Should there be somewhere where you can do someone?
Yeah. Yeah, so we've had a conversation in our senior managers' meetings and we are going to look to try and, again, what we do is we don't cost in sessional workers, we are going to do that. So we have sessional workers who add to our permanent events team simply because we need them, because they're big parties and we need additional help with ours and things. So the additional income of the forecast should cover those costs and similarly it should be the same. We should be looking to understand, if nothing else, how much our big costs are, even though they may be taken care of in a different budget, we need to understand that and make sure. What you've also got to remember is the heating and light will be on most of the day if there was no hires, because in the Carnegie, that's our town hall. But yes, absolutely.
I was saying like the cafe, we think, oh yeah, the cafes do it absolutely great, but we forget that they're using power. You know?
Yeah.
And it's just to get them to say, I mean, I'm not worried about it because it's, you know, finance from look at the overall of what.
Well, I think it's a fair point because we have had discussions with Alan about the allocation of costs and how to make this format of the financial report more relevant or give us more information that we've asked. So I don't know whether, when we left it last, Alan was going to take that to finance, looking for his format going through in the new financial year. Do you know if anything further's come of that?
So I think he is working on those because he did a report to this committee, you know, like you say earlier on. So I think he's going to periodically, sort of once a quarter, probably do those kind of reports. So I'll make sure that he tries to factor in, even if it's.
Nominal allocation.
Nominal allocation versus the highs that we've had. So, yeah.
Mike. Thank you. Just a question really, heating really, David. Just interested to know, when we turn on the heating in the Carnegie, is it, as it were, one switch for the building, can we, is the room itself, the main room's not being used? Does it not get heated or does it get heated?
So the Carnegie is a completely different system to the Guildhall. The Guildhall is exactly that, Mike. You turn it on, it heats every room, whether there's people in it or not. With the Carnegie, yes, we can be more room specific. They've got individuals. So our main heating bill would emanate from the main hall. We can take that out. We can take that out if it's not used. And we know roughly how long it takes to heat up for a hire. So if someone was coming in at six o'clock as they were last night, we don't have to put the heating on really until four o'clock in the main room. The heating in the bar area, which is, you know, communal movement and in the two offices, they would be on from seven o'clock in the morning if it's cold. But I must admit, some of those small office rooms, they don't take too long to warm up and we are, you know, we're taking the heating down. But yeah, so we can be, the real issue is the Guildhall. As a Guildhall is an old fashioned heating oil boiler. So again, we'll talk in a future agenda item about some of the alternatives that we might have to look at.
Good, thank you. Just on that, David, obviously that repairs figure there, does that include the current repairs on the Guildhall boiler?
Yes.
Right, yeah. And, you know, we're on borrowed time with it, as we think. Have we got any indication that we got six months or we got a year?
So they won't, they won't commit to that. What they're saying is, yeah, we've probably got a good six months, but we're already, we're already getting people in now to survey and put together alternative quotes for different heating options. Again, it's a great tool, a great tool listed building, so you've got to be mindful of that. But yeah, we've just had a company, funny enough, last week come in to do a survey from Norwich, who are looking for us a quote and then we've obviously got our local providers that we're getting. So that's something we need to pan out at least by early summer, because that would be one of the things that we might have to factor into our future heritage bid at the end of the year. So that's something that's really important.
Any further questions?
Yes, great.
Thank you, David. So now on to 6222, the marketing report.
It should have been circulated this week or last week to everybody. And we'll just go through it quickly and then if you have any questions, we'll pick them up. Offline marketing still going well. We're continuing to distribute posters and leaflets across town centre. Our community groups are taking them out with monthly sangria, which is brilliant. You would please know the leaflet holders have arrived. They're all ready to go and we're just reformatting the leaflet so that it fits in it. And we have, we're trying to get as much information as we can onto that so that it's onto use. And we're just looking at the best places to target for this. So if you have any ideas, any hairdressers, any shops you visit regularly as councillors, it would be great to have that feedback if you're happy to drop one in or speak to the people just to save one of our members of staff spending the day running around town every couple of weeks replacing them. Retirees up to date again, very full and we get a lot of community engagement with that and community leaflets. Online marketing is still going really well. Facebook, Twitter and Instagram are being used. And we are picking up Twitter more so as we go on, but it's starting to build slowly, which is good. All of our pages are performing really well. We're getting between 15 and 25% engagement on most of the pages regularly. As you can see from the little graph, it goes up and down, but it does go up and down across the month. Some weeks, some days will kind of hit 300 people, other days will hit 6,000. It's just the way that Facebook works. It doesn't mean that, you know, it just suddenly dropped. It might just be that someone hasn't clicked on that link within the last hour. As soon as someone clicks, it fills everyone's newsfeed again. So we're just encouraging more engagement with that. We have just recently run a campaign for the Guildhall Tea Room. It went up last week. It's getting a lot of engagement for Valentine's little cream cheese box giveaway. We've actually pushed our engagement up to 49% for the last two weeks, which is beyond good. You aim for 5%, so 49 is very good. It won't obviously stay at that level, but we're hoping that as a result of that, more people can see the page, more people share it and more people be aware that obviously the tea room is there and the footfall will pick up in there. Sorry. Obviously, we continue using the What's On Breckland website for listings. That's obviously used across any events within Thetford and within Breckland area. They list them on there and people can just go on and see what's happening. And we're continuing to use QR codes on our leaflets that we've got. Hopefully councillors are distributing our packs for us as well. If you ever need any extra leaflet, just drop me an email or pop into the office and I can get them sent through any of the committees or obviously probably pick them up in the office from us as well, because we can always print more. And yeah, we are, feedback wise, we're getting good feedback from our events. We've put a little bit of feedback on here from the Guildhall Heritage Project this month. It would be nice to just put a different thing on there. So last month we had Christmas switch on, which was really positive. This month, there is some feedback from our younger visitors who all came in and did the school stay in here. They did a mock council, which they very much enjoyed and we're asking lots of questions about the history of Thetford, which is great because although, you know, you've got six and seven year olds, they will go home and they'll tell their parents that this is happening with the council at the Guildhall and in King's House. And show the good things that we're doing in the town. Yeah. Is there any questions?
I did see we were interacting with one of our posts, which I've certainly heard in the past.
Yes.
Was that, is this the, you know, look to answer the factory? I think when we, we've had conversations in the past, why don't we actually dispel some of the myths that are put out there?
Yeah, so we, on our, we are still reluctant to go back on forums and things like that because obviously you have no control over comments on that. Unless you have someone sat there policing it, you cannot kind of respond to that. And it just looks like you said a comment and then no one's picked up on that. And it can be, it can get quite interesting, shall we say. But on our own pages, we are going back, we are responding to a point, obviously we don't want to fuel fire. So we're going back with factual responses and kind of almost copy paste clean cut to fit the issue that's there. The post, I'm guessing was the heritage one that was put up, yeah. And instantly, the problem with, the issue with that one was potentially the first comment that's on there is a negative comment. And actually, we needed to be seen that we were trying to put something positive out, that there's lots of things to do. So we needed to be responding to that. But, you know, it was valid. There was, there were issues within the town centre, but as a council, we hadn't been made aware of that at that point. So the right thing to do was to send them the link to say, this is how you report it. If there is an issue, our team will go out, our team will pick it up and fix it. If we don't, if we're not made aware of it, we're not sure on that. We can't obviously send the team out to do that. But yeah, within our pages and within what we feel is appropriate to do, so we will.
No, I welcome the.
Yeah. So there's a, I've been working with one of the team at Breckland who does their communications and speaking to him a lot about it and about the ways to go back and, you know, the positive interactions. Everyone's obviously saying civility and respect. And I did a social media training on that as well. So there was a whole section of that that was just based around social media interactions. So we've done a lot on that. We've worked with, on that course, I think it was 12 councils around the UK that joined in on that. So we've got a lot of feedback from that and a lot of ideas from them and how to respond. So yeah, going forward, hopefully on our pages, as much as we can police it, because obviously we can't have someone sat on social media all the time. We just don't have the time and the staff to do that. But we will respond to where we can if we feel it's appropriate. However, if it's a direct question, it will be responded to rather than kind of a grumble unless it's something we can respond to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, that's good, good. Couple more questions is the, how frequently? You've mentioned we did the Christmas lights switch on then, we did a heritage post. Are we looking at one a month or once a fortnight or something to keep the thing alive? Because.
Yeah, so we're looking at, I'm looking at scheduling posts across the year, hopefully. Obviously, things like the tea room, you can put posts out kind of every couple of days because there is naturally the content to do so, the same with the Carnegie and the Guildhall complex. You put things out because you're pushing the events, you're showing what's going on. With the town council one, there is this kind of a fine line between putting too much out and putting the information out. So when we get the information, it will be put out. But I am looking at, I was kind of speaking to Katie about this and looking at more bits about the heritage. Obviously, we've got the clock tower improvements coming up, so that will be going out as well. And I believe there's quite a lot going forward with the heritage project that will be going out on there as well. So it's just about timing it well, keeping our engagement up and making sure the information's out there.
So one thing I haven't mentioned in the past, I know we've spoken about it, is with elections coming this year, the idea is that photo ID is going to be required. And obviously, I think we need to get that reversed, saying if you've not got photos, because somebody might have a passport or driving licence that, you know, they can get postal base and that.
Yeah.
And so the age with Breckland to get.
So I was trading emails with Nathan last Friday, in fact, about this and about what they're putting out to make sure that we are uniform across, because obviously we are just passing information on from Breckland electoral team. And I was speaking to Stephen about it this morning in terms of where we're going to post that. It should be, it'll be on our websites. It will be on our social media pages as well, making sure that message is out there. But I was just waiting for the content, shall we say, or whether we'll just share their posts so that they've got the information there. Whether we'll put our own posts out is a ongoing conversation at the moment. But we're hoping to share that monthly, I believe, up until, because there's set dates, we have to share bits and pieces. But that will be, that will be going after the next few weeks, hopefully, in a few days.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and just one, I've just gone through these quickly and we always gather that people on social media, yeah, thousands are, but thousands aren't as well. For example, I read on Facebook, I wouldn't have known that otherwise, someone's doing a talk from the Ancient House Museum in the Guildhall about Toot and Carmen.
Oh, so that's the BFER product, that's the Breckland Energy Project.
Should we be advertising that?
We are. Yeah, it was shared on all our social media pages. There were leaflets in the centre and obviously they advertise with their channel. So if we're given the content, I can put it out, but.
No, I've just wanted, you know, because when we put things like this out.
Yeah, so we've got, that's the selection of the leaflets we had in the centre, but we've run out of those ones. But they have got, I can get some more if you need them. But they've got a kind of a page that's a free event overview for things like the Guildhall.
I mean, just for example, like Menchins going on the marketplace, a lot of that, I think it's only David that actually does social media. So if he knows that something's coming out, he might go along to the Guildhall. You know, whether they produce the documents and we can just distribute.
Yeah, so if anyone reduces posters or leaflets, obviously we're up the runder and we're happy to share them out and things. Within the Carnegie, we tend to just keep us in-house.
Okay.
But yeah, we can, we can do it.
BFER have their own website and you can have updates from them by that means as well, so.
But what I'm saying is that you haven't got a podium that you can put in the abbey where a lot of the elder people over there might want to go to that, but they're not going to know that it's on.
I agree.
Do you see what I mean?
I think as long as we are clear with BFER, who's doing the paper publicity.
Yeah.
You know, if they give us.
I just think we're pushing.
But I think it's, for something like that, I'd be a bit cheery about us saying we're responsible for the paper.
No.
It's just too expensive and time consuming.
They produce some, just to get an account with PAX every month, actually, you know, that's. Yeah.
Any other questions, Alison? Thank you very much and relief that one. 65322, heritage master plan.
Okay. So just to cover the first two subheadings. The first one is we are about to undertake our first of our consultation events on the 23rd and 24th of February. Tricola, who are managing our multi-disciplinary heritage team, will lead both of those events. And that's taking place at the Guildhall. Advertising is now going to start to go out. We understand now more of how the events will pan out and what's expected of them. So we can actually tell people, this is what will happen when you come along. In terms, and we were very conscious when we spoke to Tricola that we would have an evening event. So there's an evening event on Thursday, the 23rd from five till seven. And then there's a daytime event on Friday, the 24th from ten to midday or ten to one o'clock, I think. But in both cases, it will cover the same information. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a sec, because I think the town bar has sent round with the papers today, something that she's called under the clock tower, which we need to talk about as a committee in terms of what you guys would like to see as part of that heritage master planning, which is exactly what the members of public will be invited to do on both of those days. The second subheading before we go on to that is the War Memorial. And I just want to bring you up to speed about where we are with that. One of our aspirations is to, and we've talked about it in committee several times, is to bring all our commemorative plaques into one place. And that one place, we feel for obvious reasons, would be the marketplace War Memorial. So the Czech Airman, the Public Chairman, the USA Air Force, all of those that are sort of around the town centre and further appeared, hopefully will be brought into one commemorative area. We've talked to, or Tina has talked to John Waite at the Royal British Legion to ask him to take it back to their committee to get their thoughts of how they would like to see the area redeveloped and improved to do that. And he's, I think he's doing that this week. They've got a meeting this week, if they've not already had it, to talk about that very, everything. But that, again, that will be part and parcel of the master planning process. But going on to the master planning, the event will take place in the format of a quick 10 minute presentation to those who are attended to give an overview of what we mean by heritage master planning, what our aspirations are. And then moving, there will be nine stations within the Guildhall Large Court that will focus on, which will focus on nine specific areas. The Guildhall, the marketplace, St Peter's, King's House, Charles Borough Museum, Ancient House Museum, the Priory, the Biddick Temple site, and one that will mop up all the other places of interest, which is a broad brush cover of all the heritage assets within Thetford. So people will be able to visit those little stations, find out some of the ideas that have been mooted about development within the master planning of those areas and ask what is it they would like to see. So, you know, is there anything that we're not thinking about that you know that we should be doing? Would you like to be involved in future heritage sites, so part of the heritage ambassador scheme that we're looking to develop? And just give the opportunity to what Thetford's heritage offer could become in the future. So so again, from Tina's perspective, what she would like to know from councillors is which areas are absolute must dos and which areas that you as councillors would not like to see too much time being spent on. And have we got the right aspects of our heritage offer? You'll be more than welcome to come along and I'm sure most of you will on the consultation days. So you can provide your thoughts there. But as a committee, she's even talking about, is it something big enough to set up a subcommittee of members with officers to try and develop this in tandem to our consultants?
So you're saying that would be a council-wide subcommittee rather than, because obviously what we're looking at at the moment is those relevant to us as venues on there. But the general question is, as a council, do we want a subgroup to work with Tricola?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I presume we ought to, so that those are a bit more interest and knowledge can input to it and feedback. Because the last thing you want to do is have Tricola come and present to you and you've not had the opportunity to shape some of those ideas.
Yeah.
I think it's a timescale though, isn't it? Because if you set up that group now, then councillors won't be councillors. Well, actually, the whole council could be wiped out and then you've disbanded a group that has got together.
But if nothing else, just as the public consultation will provide its, your thoughts, your thoughts at this time. I mean, the whole process is very tight anyway. By November of this year, this consultation process, this master planning process with the multi-disciplinary team needs to be complete and a bid needs to be going in for the second phase funding, which will be a multimillion pound bid to transform the heritage of our town centre. So there will be lots of capital aspects to it. So some of the work that we'll be doing in, if that's what you want, St Peter's, Charles Borough Museum, et cetera, et cetera. But also, how do we knit all of these places, heritage places of interest together to create a real, true heritage visitor economy, for instance? We know as a town, as a council, we've got something that we should be proud of, but we've never, we've never concluded the issue of how do we knit it all together. And this is what we're hoping this, this team of experts will be able to help us with.
So are you saying we need to ask the council, we can just?
I think what Tina's saying, Stuart, is there are things, there are some that might be really out there. And I'm looking at the paper and in the bottom section, you're talking about tunnels and vaults. Now, we know there's tunnels and vaults dotted around the town. How do we get those? We're even talking about, we feel that there's an access to what used to be the old cell underneath the judges' chair in the tea room. Is there something that could add value to the future heritage offer of the town and put that in? So we excavate it, we turn it into a place of interest, an attraction.
I suppose that, like King's thing, you go down in the cell and they've got the jail underneath.
I mean, I was surprised that a conversation that was had a couple of weeks back about if you go into the basement of this place, you can stand up, it's vaulted. I thought it was just like some little tunnel bit that you crawled in to get up through the, so I mean, you know, that's quite exciting. So again, should we be, well, King's House is one of the areas that we're looking. How do we develop this to be more of an attraction, more of a, and something that can possibly generate an income that will sustain those heritage assets in the future? So I think she's asking, is it, you know, is that too outlandish? Should we not waste our time in doing that? It's something we talk about, but we just can't physically do it. Or do we concentrate, or just concentrate, sorry, on things like the obvious, which is the emergency work at St Peter's for the bell tower, the roof of the North Isle, et cetera, et cetera. That could be enough to be going on with. But this is a once in a generation opportunity, I think. So we need to get it right, not just to access funding, but also to finally bring all of those places of interest, deliverers, the ancient houses, the Charles Borough Museum, et cetera, et cetera, together and create something that will be a huge asset and have huge appeal.
Right. I wonder whether it's worth making attempt to look at the list. I wonder whether it's worth making attempt to look at the list and say, this is something that people will go to and enjoy, but probably only go once. That's a place that they will return to. And maybe we have to, you know, focus on the return to. I mean, the particular example you gave, I think is fascinating. It interests me as a historian, but I don't think people might want to go twice either than want to go once. So include locations which people are likely to return to. And it does include, I would have thought the market square possibly, but it certainly includes the other show areas where you can put on activities, could be St Peter's and Riverside. So I think that might be one guard as to which are the ones to focus on. Is it worth having a councillor's meeting where people want to have an expression with Tricola? To do that or is that?
So, so this particular team that are coming across for the consultation are only here for the twenty third and twenty fourth. Now, I think they'll be here by mid morning. So it could be something that we, you could gather those councillors that wish to attend the afternoon of Thursday, the twenty third, before they go into the evening event. So again, it might be something that is, well, it's, you might feel a little bit more comfortable in talking about some of the things. And then you go into the public event in the evening and then Friday morning.
Yeah.
So I think that's good shout.
Yeah, you're saying it's a million pound bid.
Multi million pound.
Multi, multi million pound bid. And what do you do now? Because, well, when you say multi million, you know, I don't know how much multi million it is. No, but whatever the bid is, and then you've got to work out that bid to what you're putting in. Just come down off the millions, just say it was a million. So you're going for a million pounds. What can you do with that million pounds and what is it that we should do?
Think you, if you work out the other way, you'll be putting your things that you want to bid for. So you'll get that money specifically earmarked for the projects that you've put together.
Is there any way that once you put in that multi million pound bid, that you're also planning for the future at the same time? So just say, for example, the money that we've got, we want to do everything that you've just said, but we can't afford to go under the judge's chamber at this present time. But that's in your future plans. I'm just trying to get my head around. Do you know what I mean?
So, sorry. So from my point of view, I think you need to, you need to start with the ultimate pitch. You know, this is something that we want to do. We want to sell the heritage appeal of this town to a wider audience. And then the knock on effect is that we increase our visitor economy. In a town like every other town in the country will struggle to retain the town centre image or identity in the future. So this is, this is our way of possibly reimagining, reinventing our town centre. But then to do that, to achieve that, there are some of the obvious things. We've got a clock tower that is in dire need of repair. Now, we've got some money that we can do basic repair, but we need to continue to improve that. St Peter's is another one, Charles Borough is another one. But the National Heritage Lottery Fund and English Heritage will say, so if we give you money to do that, what's the benefit? What's the ongoing benefit? So then there's the second part of it. How are you going to utilise those heritage assets?
Yeah.
We've done that to a degree and this is why they're very interested in working with us. Because they've seen what they've spent and it's minuscule to what we would be looking at as a town centre wide bid. But they've seen what we've been awarded for the Guildhall and what we've done with it. And we now have a legacy that we can take forward after that funding bid will finish in November of this year. Our schools programme and heritage and town events will hear more of this. And town council will hear more of this at the end of the year, end of the month, when I think Stuart is going to present a report that Katie and Tina have put together. And you will be blown away by the numbers. And that's something that we don't want to stop in November, we want to continue it. How are we going to develop something that's going to give us that legacy going forward? And I think they're the two things that we need to look at as a council. Obviously, there's partners like the Ancient House Museum that's going to have to have their own input.
Yeah.
And there are people that we haven't even thought about. We were talking earlier in our sort of teams meeting that actually, look what's happened at the Thomas Paine, they've improved that, you know, the, you know, the aspects around Thomas Paine has improved and will continue to improve. Again, they can't be missed out on this. They're a town centre business that are looking to develop their heritage offer as well. It's, we need to make sure that we cover all of that. I would say the biggest one that we're struggling with at the moment, and I know I'm talking about this in a public meeting, but it's the Priory. So we, again, and it's something when we walked the multi disciplinary team around the other week, we cannot afford not to have that within the overall heritage.
I was going to mention the Priory because I don't know if it's true, but there's an old well there. And if you go through the tunnel, you come up in that air dressers. Whether it's true, I don't know, but that's what all the scouts used to be told.
I think the Priory is the hidden gem that, hidden away. There's MTI money being put towards trying to improve the aspect of the substation and the underpass and that. And to give a little bit of, and when I mentioned it at GTP yesterday about they used it for last year's concert.
Yeah.
But because there's no infrastructure there, it's very costly to do anything there. So sustainability wise, if you provided some facilities, even if it's electric feeds and toilets that could be used for events, then certainly bring it into a more active thing. But there's also the abbey redevelopment and how that gets brought into there. But you're right, it needs to be brought into this.
And another one, I mean, one of the things that they were blown away with is, you know, when we've had discussions with them before, we talked about the golden mile, you know, everything is so compact and easy accessible. They didn't realise, we didn't actually go as far as riding to the Priory. But we just walked past the Charles Borough after that little visit and we said, well, the Priory is only just there, so we'll pop along and see it. And they knew that that was the end of that with the castle mound the other end of the town centre. And it's so, it's so compact. But again, looking at Castle Park, you know, is this, you know, we've talked about building something next to the toilets, which is a little sort of cafe and type thing, but it could be another little heritage information point that people understand what this green area is all about and its history and where it's, where it's come from. So again, you know, all of those things need to be discussed.
Yeah, so I think it's worthwhile having a meeting with those for interested councillors if we can. Mike?
Yeah, I agree about the meeting, that the Priory is definitely agree with David, it's the biggest problem. For one thing, it brings in no money. I mean, I appreciate what you said about having events there. We do have quite a good range of event, possible places or existing places. We're sitting next to one.
Yeah.
And I kind of feel that probably, although it's lovely to have, let's say, a play or a concert, when we had symphony concert once in the, in the, in the Priory. It is lovely, providing the weather's okay, but you, you really are having to put money in. There's no shelter for performers that could easily, it's got to be, you know, it's got to be put up for the occasion. I'm a bit cheery about, I've seen charity, it's a bad word, isn't it? I wouldn't want to put that top of the list to develop because I don't know if we're going to get our money back on that. It's a tricky one because you want people to go there, you want people to be attracted to the town because it's there and include it on a, on a general walkabout or a day in the town. And we are getting people spending a couple of days, three days in the town, which is wonderful. But I just don't see it doing other than being negative financially.
Well, I think, you know, that it's because it is one end of your, your magic mile, it's not actually a mile, but it's, I've had people in the past, so you've got the castle mound one end, the Priory the other. Walk down, you know, the King Street thing and then you come, you look back by the river. So you've got that natural thing. So it is a big hit, but you and I have meetings with English Heritage, Mike. We know that they're not interested and they're not going to throw money at it. But is there a way of levering something via this to improve the offer that we have there? It may not be you want to chuck money in terms of the electrics and the things for concerts, but to improve the the outside of the area, you know, unkempt car parks are not a great inviting entrance. There are little things that can be done, which if you can leave the money out through this, I think it'd be worthwhile.
If I was putting a coffee place anywhere, that would be at least a better than search choice. So I agree about Castle Park. There's an argument for saying you've got a little bit of a captive audience in that there are parents looking at the children, Ronald and Swins and so on. And it'd be nice to have some facility for them. But you can argue about here, which we have done before. I know we've been quite close in the past to thinking about, do we want to have a little cafe back here? And again, seems to me it's more accessible and you will, you might get people here who are not necessarily wanting to see a particular place, but because it's nearly town centre. Nothing quite at this end, probably quite a possibility. You put a cafe, a little opportunity in Castle Park, sorry, in the Priory, would people go there? I suspect the only people who go there were the ones who were going around the Priory and that's some of them, when people go around the Priory. I'm not sure that's, you know, I wouldn't say it's the best bet that was putting coffee in some way.
I wasn't suggesting a coffee shop, it's just improving the look and.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, I think, I think, I think the idea of putting a coffee place in the castle is good, castle mound is a, sorry, castle mound is a good bet. Not too sure that we should spend too much money on, even though I'd like, I agree with you, I love the place, it's wonderful, the Priory, but we have to be a bit hard nosed as well.
I think that's something that you go on to let on. You've done, you've done the Priory up on the outside, nice, nice park, people come in and, you know, they have a walkabout. Oh, they might leave their car in and come across to the Charles Borough Museum and go and visit the Ancient House Museum and then go back to the car park. If they don't want to go to the upper end of town. So you, you have got that little circle there because, you know, a mile is a lot to some people. But when you look at the Priory, when I first moved down here, you couldn't get in there. You had to go through that gate. I don't, I don't know if you pay to get in, but anyway, they don't like give you a ticket and that's where you was. And that's what the downfall was, was then it, it just looked like a load of old stones to people, doesn't it? Because people are just going in and out and using it roughly. To me, if we, if we had that back in there where there's somebody sitting on the gate during the day, it's not going to hurt, is it? You know, it's, you're uplifting that area by having someone sitting there. You can have all these posters in there about the rest of the town, you know, heritage and.
Sense to do so that, but what you could do.
It might not make financial sense to us, but it might to English Heritage because it's only a small thing that they've got to do. Because we've done the general work within the bid. So just having that little cabin in the back of there, do you know what?
See you, David. All I was thinking of is we've got these lovely green lecterns up at Castle Park. If the Priory is shut and you're walking around on a summer's evening, why not have one of those outside? So you're then enhancing your visitor experience without having to incur, all right, the capital cost is there. Once it's up, you know, that gives you that little extra bit to it. So I think there are little things we could do and you could lever that out through this. Anyway, David.
Yeah, so I think, I think actually these conversations are exactly where we want to go. Mike's absolutely spot on because there's no, even though we understand the Priory is really significant in the heritage story. National Heritage Lottery Fund will say, okay, so we've invested this in it, what are we going to get back? They will do. What our ambitions are is that we want people to come here, we want people to look at the Priory. So what we then have to say is we can't put X amount of infrastructure in because it's not sustainable, it's not, it's not going to give us any income back. But it could be that if we develop something like the heritage ambassador scheme, that you can have from time to time, a low key type presence down there, someone in costume that actually wanders around and talks to people. So it brings it to life, but it doesn't, is not any great expense. And from time to time, if, if someone wants to invest a lot of money to put, you know, a night at the proms in the Priory, then absolutely fine, they can do that. And they'll have to bring in the generators as we did with the Cheltenham House Theatre production last year. But that's something we just want to increase the footfall, but they're the kind of conversations we have to have. I, you know, and Stuart's absolutely right in certain terms, whether you can't get people there if there's no car parking. So we need to improve that. And one of the things that we did say, which is not very nice, is that little last steps from the Charles Borough Museum to the Priory, you go in, you go under an underpass, which is not really very nice. But they were saying, don't worry about that, we'll make that into a, you know, a heritagey type. Yeah, so you will be led there. So I think all these conversations are exactly what we want. The problem is we haven't got a lot of time.
So if we can organise that meeting.
Yeah.
Come armed with all our points.
Yeah.
So that we're not talking across each other all the while and that way.
Has that been sent to us then?
Yeah, this is going out, I mean, I could.
When did that come out?
It went out with the, with the pack. But if not, I'll get Tina to send it to all councillors because we want it and all members.
Just the twenty third.
It will have to be the twenty third, yeah, which is a Thursday.
Right.
Just a quick, again, I'm being a bit negative, I know. If I was wanting to put a concert on, a symphony concert, for example, which we did 20 years ago, once in the Priory. But the next year we went to the British Trustful Anthology. And actually, although it's, or maybe because it's somebody else's, it's much cheaper, much better bet in some ways. It is, it is better parking, it has got some public toilets, you might not need to put money into movable toilets. I can see if someone wants to be bold enough to try and do something big on that scale again, that would be the place to go to. So again, I think we do need to be really careful about that particular size. It's so difficult, I totally agree with David, it's the most difficult size of all. Because you love it, it's, it's great, it does bring some people from around the country. I've just one more negative thing. I'm a bit concerned that the powers that be up in London don't think it's worth putting money into out of now. You know, go to Castle Lake is what they're really saying, if you want that sort of thing. And I'm afraid that's now got facilities and we haven't. So we need to be careful what we spend there.
Well, I think we've probably explored that as far as we can really, but.
Can I just say, one, yeah, it's just a point. So the heritage master plan is, obviously that's going to be going on for years to come until you've done it. You're not going to do it.
The master plan is this multi disciplinary scheme we've got in there now, the team are putting the plan together. So when you come to the end of this year, they will put their bid in with all the preferred options and costed up things. If we are successful with that, then we will develop, you know, those or deliver those items that are on there. But yes, the plan is very specific to those projects for this funding bid, but it doesn't mean to say after that.
What I'm saying, that funding bid, once you've got that funding bid, they say yes, they're not just going to give you all this money at one go because you're not going to do the work all in one go, are you?
It'll be a year delivery.
Well, yeah, so let me get to where I'm getting at. I think it's when you go to a consultation that you try to find the people that are really, really interested in this. And that is that you, I know you have the councillors, but you also have a panel working with you of interested people. So, you know, not, not just a woman that's going to walk up the street in a old fashioned costume, but you have a, you know, I understand. The, as Mike Brindav said, he might not be a councillor, but do you know what? He's really interested in this and he wants his two pennies back. And it's getting people like that, you know, you can interview to see if they're actually in the right place. But I, I just think for something to work and a town to come together, you need the general public.
So the consultation, just to clarify, those, those two dates for consultation are their information area. Are they having conversation with key stakeholders as well?
Key stakeholders will be there, maybe manning one of the stations to tell them what they want to do in their particular location. But there will be others just trying to explain.
But they will be on, on that day, so that we know other, they won't be going to say, you know, the Friends of the Ancient House Museum or somewhere like that as a, as a body to consult. They hope to bring them in via this general consultation.
Yeah.
The objective, what Brian is saying is you might have half a dozen people who are really keen to be involved with the whole process. And this will be their only opportunity by the side of it.
And, and this is their chance. This is, this is, we need to get it out there because this is their chance. I mean, when you have heritage posts on Facebook, on social media, you get lots of people say, well, you know, we shouldn't be doing this, we should be doing, come and tell us, or not us, come and tell these people. Come and tell these people so it gets embedded in, in their thoughts and hopefully their future bid. Because this is, this is probably, you know, as I said. Because this is, this is probably, you know, as I said, a once in a generation opportunity really, because funding is going to get harder and harder.
So how, you know, back to Hazel, this, this is the time we've got to sell hard to get those people there.
Yeah.
And try and find those really interested, not just the casual person who wants to go for gripe.
Yeah. Individuals, and again, you know, they may be the individuals that watch this recording back, so I will say, they are, I, I've read certain quotes and comments about, you know, I've told the council how they should market heritage in, in the, well, I've never seen anything like that. Um, come and tell them, come and tell these people again, if you really, because there's lots of people out there who are very knowledgeable. Uh, very knowledgeable and, and as I said, you know, um, we need all the stories and all the opportunities that we can master to put together.
Yeah, but basically what I was getting at is obviously, y- y- you know, once the bid's gone through, they've said yes, and you're going to have, you'll, you'll have, you'll have the council, you'll have the, uh, Ancient House Museum, you have, um, Charles, they'll all, you'll all be sitting there and there's the work's getting done, you know, you'll probably meet up little meetings every now and again. But what I'm saying is, you, you could have some people in the general public, so.
Yeah.
That, that's what I was getting at.
Okay, well, I think to get them engaged is to get to this, the consultation first job. Right, six five four twenty two then, Guildhall repairs.
All I wanted to do, I just wanted to put this back on because at last month's meeting, I was saying that, I told you that the scaffolding was planned to go up and obviously the scaffolding hasn't gone up for the clock towers. Um, but just to, uh, reassure you that, um, uh, Nick's got it in hand, uh, and they are coming to do the initial survey of the ground. So if they can get the scaffolding up to, uh, look at, um, taking down the, uh, the Guildhall cocktail. So, yeah, we're, 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 we're looking, it's, it's a bit ironic really because we're looking, looking at developing our Heritage Master Plan. One of our most iconic, um, features will probably be missing for at least eighteen months to two years, if not longer. Um, but it's got to be done.
So what's the scaffolding up that's there now?
The scaffolding is up really for, oh no, sorry, the scaffolding up at the moment, that should be coming down soon. That was just to take out the dormer window.
Right.
So that's offsite now, being repaired and restored. Um, so we'll take that down because we don't need it. The scaffolding will go up for them to look and supervise the, the removal in two parts of the bell tower and the clock tower and then sealing, um, the, the final section. And it will be craned off and taken again to an out, out offsite workshop to be restored and repaired. So I just wanted, I mean, you, you know, after saying so much last month that it didn't happen.
Didn't happen.
No, so that's the way I wanted to.
We still see that.
Yeah.
So just on the Guildhall, uh, area, the steps at the back with Cordon d'Or because they are crumbling.
Yeah.
You need to put planning in.
So planning needs to go in because we were sort of, we were given a little bit of a, a, a dustier in terms of because we have all the black railings around the site already, uh, it would be easy just to continue those black railings, take away the brick and just continue those down the steps, repair the steps and, and then it was said, well, no, um, because you're not repairing, you're not restoring line to line, you've got to put planning application in. So the planning application is going to go in. Um, we're sure that it's going to be something that they'll go for because they've already got the black railings around every, every other area of it. And we can get those, um, back into, um, action, but people can go up the, we try and keep that area a lot clearer now so people can go up into, um, these other steps to go through to the marketplace.
But what the state, that we haven't pu- put the planning in yet.
It's got to go in, but we're assured it's only going to be a few weeks, um, because it'll be.
So we're looking before Easter to the plan.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Um, so again, whilst we're on outside this, this bit, um, the guys who are putting the electricity feeder pillar in have got the, um, feeder pillar from the suppliers finally. Um, and, uh, hopefully works will be started within the next couple of weeks. Um, UK Power Networks have identified to them where they need to trench and bring in the supply. So everything has been box tipped on that one, it's just then getting on site, but they're, we're now down to the final details of where are their vehicles going to park, can we call in it off, blah, blah, blah. So we're, we're almost there on that one. Um, the gates are being, uh, made and, and again, once that feeder pillar in the trenching is done, I don't know which way the trenching is going. If I, if I, I think, if I think that it's where I think it's going to go, then actually we can get the gates in now because, um, they're pretty much done. Uh, but if it's going to come from a different direction, we might as well get the electricity done first and then put the gates in afterwards, otherwise they're beating each other's way. Um, so that's, uh, done and then as soon as we can get the, uh, gates, the feeder pillar in, the planters ready to go in, that's being built. Um, and then we can get the festoon lighting up, so those things will be sort of domino effect. We have got to have everything ready by the middle of March because that's where we can claim some of this funding bank. Uh, but also at the end of the March, we start our events programme for the market square all the way through to December. And as the committee will hear next week, it's a pretty blooming exciting programme. I'm really, I'm really pleased about it and we're getting other people now come to us, um, saying, if we came on and used your space, could we deliver some stuff? Absolutely, so it's not always our staff, you can have that space and knock yourself out and do great stuff for people to come along and enjoy. But our first event is the end of March, which will be a steampunk event over Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So Katie's got some good stuff planned for that. Um, we're also at the final touches to our seaside special in August, so that will be a five day event from Wednesday through to Sunday, August, back end of August, I think, which will be everything seasidey, but fifty miles, forty miles away from any city. So actually we are taking on the realms of world now, I'm speaking. But yeah, so that'll be really good, that's really exciting. And then we've got another company that, um, has contacted us and said that we really like that, we like the way it's set up. We like all pedestrian high street, so a couple of times a year we could come down and, uh, we could bring a, a, a continental market. So again, we're tying those in with a couple of our big events, so it naturally spreads out into their main high street. Uh, and they will bring all the stalls, so there'll be a variety of stalls, not just foodie stalls, there'll be sort of these crafty type stalls as well, you know, that you see at various different, um, stadiums and stuff like that. So we're also trying to encourage them to be even bigger and go down Riverside Walk down to, uh, the Riverside there. So a couple of times a year, they're going to come for three days. Um, so it's not just a day, it's, they're coming for three days, uh, over the weekend. So again, we'll tie it in with a big event on the marketplace with music and stuff like that, so that'll be really good. So Hazel will be publishing all of these event programmes fairly soon, um, and hopefully people will be excited by it.
Chris?
One of our most popular events was the Soapbox Challenge, is it ever coming back?
So the Soapbox Show, someone asked me that the other day, I don't know, was it you Hazel? Becky, Becky asked me from the tea room, she said someone had came in and said, what about Soapbox Challenge? We, we put hold to that after a couple of years simply because, um, the regulars that were, um, competing in it actually said, um, can we have another route? Can we have something a little bit more challenging? Um, not just down the high street because it's straight and it's not as steep or in time. And coming off a pedestrianized area like that into the road system is a huge undertaking. You've got a closed road, you've got to move traffic around in different directions and our town centre road network is not the best at, at any time. So I must admit, um, and then it was Covid came in and we was restricted to doing anything. But I must admit, it's something that is not on that rise in Springbank. Um, one of the routes that were talked about was, um, utilizing the market square for our pit stops, if you like. And then going down Well Street and into School Lane Car Park. Uh, even if you have a traffic light system by the library to let the flow go from the markets, um, which you could do, that's still a massive undertaking, so no, not at the moment.
Right, six five five twenty two, community engagement, I think we've talked a little bit about what we want to be talking about.
Yeah.
Um, is there anything further from the committee that I'm publicising, otherwise Hazel will work her magic. Six five six twenty two, committee officers update, I presume, David, you've told us most of the stuff now?
I have, but there is something, there is something that, um, that we will bring back formally, um, to the, um, to the committee because that's part of our terms of reference, because it is a request for a free venue hire. Um, and it is for the TARA's. So, um, the TARA's are coming back, hopefully if all goes well in November. And so I said to Mark, um, I, I will submit that application in the next meeting. But I just wanted to give you a heads up that it is going to go ahead and it will be something to contemplate with next month.
Thank you. Keep taking off your attendance.
I, I, I do like the Wetherspoons, um.